So, thank you all very much for coming today. And thank you for having the patience to have a shotgun start this morning to allow people that otherwise might not have had a chance to get here to get here. So, I think I know everybody, but in case that I don't, I'm Mike Iker. I'm the president of the Board of Directors here at Richmond Country Club. The purpose of calling you all together is to talk about the financial performance of the club and about our efforts to create an ongoing five-year plan, and to talk as well about some of the things that we've accomplished so far this year and what we are going to be accomplishing for the balance of this year and as well as in the near future after that. So, first of all, I'd like to introduce the Board of Directors and our general manager. First of all, Ralph Fratman, general manager. It's always nice that Ralph gets universal applause. The rest of us only get a smattering of applause and a few boos, but Ralph always does great. Ralph got here in January 2014 just in time for the fun to start and has seen us through some difficult challenges. He's done a great job with club operations, and he's also helped us shape our vision of the future of the club. You've probably seen his articles in the approach, which have addressed his views of things that we could do going forward. I'll just go quickly through our Board of Directors. Dave Bott, over there. Dave Bott is in a second term, is that right? It's great once someone comes back for a second try. So, Dave Bott is our treasurer of the corporation, and he runs the finance committee. And as a side job, he does our tax filings, which we appreciate very much. Bob Fuller, also in his second term, is going to become our vice president on Monday, and we'll talk more about that in a second, and is the head of our House Committee, which has been working hard this year on improvements to the clubhouse and the areas around it. And in particular, when you all come back after the course closure, you'll see the clubhouse exterior has been repainted. So, that's one of the things that's going to have been accomplished. Mark Kaplan, also in his second term, he's head of golf committee, and I was so happy that he decided to continue to do that. He's taken on two of the hardest things that we have to deal with, besides just the administration of events. He's been dealing with pace of play, and we're just about to roll out our initiative on handicaps, which is two hard topics for them. Gary Masada is not here. Gary Masada is the head of another very important committee, which is the membership committee. He's away at his sister-in-law's 50th wedding anniversary. Next, I want to give a very special thank you to Dave Michelle. Come on, stand up. Oh, that's a terrible thing to say. Dave has been a great member of the board, now in his second term on the board. He is going to leave us and become a senior non-equity member, and will leave the board as a consequence. His date to do that is the end of this month, so as of Monday, Patsy Taravini has agreed to fill in. So, Patsy's going to fill in the remaining calendar year of Dave's three-year term, and then we'll have to add that position for the vote of the directors, which would come up at the end of this year for all of us who term out. Then I want to introduce Brian Service. Brian's going to do most of the conversation today. Brian comes to us with a unique professional history and expertise, which he can tell you more about. But he has come to the board to work on our long-range planning and financial modeling and has done an absolutely great job and changed the way that we think about and talk about those issues at the board level. So, the agenda today is, first of all, we're going to get a finance report, talk about where we've been in the recent past, where we're going to be through this year, and then looking forward in the longer term. The long-term plan contains several elements, which Brian will talk about. You can see them all there. And then I'm going to wrap up at the end of the day with the president's report, which summarizes some of the things that various committees have accomplished already. So, with all that having been said, Brian Service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. I am a fairly new member of the club. I've been a member of four years. My background is as a turnaround CEO. I did 20-plus years working for Silicon Valley, venture capital funds, looking after their problem portfolios or problems in their portfolios. And I guess in that capacity, I spent a lot of time looking at their past and current financials and creating future perspectives, goals, and long-term plans for those organizations, and helping them implement them and then moving on. So, today, the board are going to share with you some of the background to preparing the long-term plan, which is in progress and which will be coming to you later in the year.
It's all about the tennis club. The tennis club, the turnaround tennis club.
Oh, I... Bob was talking about the fact that I've done a similar, had a similar involvement with the Belvedere Tennis Club. Belvedere Tennis Club, six years ago, was in a very parlous situation, and it has been restructured now into a very, very successful swim tennis club with a two-and-a-half-year membership waitlist, which has surprised even me, myself.
We're not putting in tennis courts.
Right.
No tennis courts yet.
But let me get back to the long-term plan. In creating a long-term plan, step one is to understand where you are. And so, for that, we turn to our finance report. Now, we could give you, I was talking to Stu Offer over lunch, and Stu said, "Well, of course, we're going to get the P and L, the balance sheet, the cash flow." That's an awful lot of numbers. Part of what is important to understand is what are the key indicators of the financial condition of the club? And we've chosen three here for you. Operating profit, which you're all familiar with, cash flow, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and liquidity, which is a really interesting measure. Liquidity is your ability to pay your bills. If you have to look at your checkbook every time you write a check, the bank balance every time you write a check, you have poor liquidity. And that's the condition that Richmond was in last year and for part of this year. But things are improving, as you can see here. So, if you look at 2014, we were negative in everything. In 2015, we had a net profit, and we also had positive cash flow of about $60,000. But the negative liquidity was not addressed. So, that meant that Ralph still had to look at his bank balance every time he tried to pay a bill, a lot of stress. Year-to-date this year, as you can see, we're profitable, we're cash flow positive, and we've made a big dent in the negative liquidity. And our plan for the year is actually to have positive cash flow of $223,000, which is about four times what it was last year, and to continue the improvement in the overall liquidity. So, financially, the club is moving quite quickly towards being sustainable. So, with that in mind, we need to turn to the process for producing a long-term plan. That process, as you see, includes producing a financial model for the club going forward, some tools for monitoring the performance of the club against those goals, and then because there's never enough money, you have to decide what you're going to spend money on and what you're not going to spend money on. So, the spend priorities, and then you can get to the plan itself. Now, we don't have the plan for you today, but it is in progress. And we are going to bring the plan to you later, or more information about the plan to you later in the year. But today, we're going to talk about the elements here, and that will give you some more information, really, about the club and the progress it's making. So, the first thing you need to do with a financial model is you need to think about a few assumptions. And the first assumption that we have here is that revenue and expenses will increase 2% a year. That's based on the fact that our expenses increase quite steadily at 2% a year. Our non-dues revenue, which is the bar, the restaurant, and everything else, increases about 1% a year. So, that means that our dues revenue needs to increase 3% a year. And, you know, we can either do that with membership increase, or we can do it with dues increases, or we can do it with a combination of both. Our next assumption is that membership growth was really the key to achieving that 3% dues increase or dues revenue increase. And we're doing a lot of work now in tracking our membership marketing and the results of our membership marketing. We use a measure called full equity equivalent membership. So, that's effectively the dues that we bill each month for operational dues, and we divide it by the dues number, and that gives us an FEE number. So, we fell to a low of 349 in that number in 2014. 2015, we sold 75 memberships, and currently, we're at 357, slightly below the start of the year with sales of 29 to the end of June. Now, we've had a lot of turnover in the first part of the year, but by and large, the sales that we've had have enabled us to keep reasonably stable. The goal for the end of the year is to sell 55 memberships and to reach 370. Now, clearly, we're running a little bit behind in terms of reaching that 370 number. And if we don't reach it, in order to increase the operational dues revenue by 3%, we may have to increase operational dues a little bit, but it's going to be a combination of membership marketing and operational dues increases. Oops, what did I do? Okay. So, the third assumption in producing a model is probably one of the most important, and that is that development, future development of the club is going to be funded from the development dues and not from assessments. That's because our membership sales are predominantly in the non-equity area. We get some people who join the club as non-equity members who do become equity members, but the proportion of non-equity members is increasing. So, in order to fund development, we feel that we're going to use the development dues that you pay or the portion of your monthly dues that are what we call capital or development dues. That's how we're going to fund future development. That's an important assumption to be made because it also defines the amount of resources the club will have going forward for development. So, the next step was to create some tools to monitor our progress against a financial model, which I'm going to show you in the next slide. And we've created two reports that are really pretty important. Ralph's general manager's report has been restructured, and it focuses really on membership marketing and how many members we sell, memberships we sell each month, on cash flow, cash in the bank, and liquidity. And it's like a critical indicator sheet that he produces each month that tracks the performance of the club. The second tool we've created is to do a reserve analysis, to maintain, of what it's going to take to maintain current facilities and equipment. If you live in a condo association, as I do, by law, that condo association has to produce an analysis of future expenditure to maintain the facility. We've created one of those for Richmond Country Club. So, we have forecasted that we're going to need to spend roughly $1 million over the next five years to maintain the current facility. That's before we start enhancing the current facility. This year, we plan to spend about $122,000 over the year. Next year, because a lot of the golf course equipment needs to be replaced, should have been replaced perhaps earlier, the plan is to spend as much as $375,000 on golf course equipment, replacing it. It's old. And so, we have this plan going forward. So, with that, let's turn to what the plan looks like. Now, this is, this is a, so I stressed this is a financial model. Obviously, you have to perform to that financial model, but using the assumptions that we've talked about, this is what the future of the club might look like if it achieves those goals. And we're talking about four ways we look at that. We're talking about operating profit, and the goal is to make a small operating profit each year. In other words, the part of your dues that fund operations increases by overall, the revenue increases 2% a year against expenses, so there's a small operating profit each year. But the cash flow increases because there's also the development part, development dues part of your monthly dues. The green line is what we need to spend to maintain current facilities, and the blue line is the development fund that accumulates as a result of that. So, you can see, over a five-year period, we feel that, provided we can meet the financial goals, meet the assumptions that are tied into the financial model, we can maintain current facilities by spending about $1 million over the next five years, and we can accumulate additional development funds to enhance the club of about $650,000. Now, how the club would use that $650,000 is really important. As I said in my introduction, it's not, it's not an unconstrained amount of money, but it is there to be used to enhance the club. That plan to enhance the club is obviously what the next, the plan will address, and as I said, that's in progress. But what the board has done is to also set some priorities as to how that additional money would be spent. Priority one, obviously, is maintaining the current facilities and equipment. That has to come first. The second priority is the golf course, practice facilities, and the equipment to maintain that. That's the next, if you like, thing that the board feels you, the members, want us to spend the additional cash on. The next priority is the storefront experience. And this is a kind of, this is the experience you get when you drive into the club, go up to the pro shop, walk up through and onto the first hole, because we need to sell memberships. And so, that's the experience that you get when you enter the club, and it's also the experience that potential members get when they enter the club. So, that's the third priority. And the final priority is the clubhouse and other areas. Now, I just, that doesn't mean we're not going to spend any money on the clubhouse here, but we're defining the difference between maintaining current facilities and enhancing those facilities. And essentially, the enhancement is focused first on the golf course and second on what we call the storefront experience. So, our development plan is in progress. We hope, I hope to be standing here in October and giving you a lot more information about what that plan is. But today, I just wanted to show you that one, the financial basis of the club is becoming sounder and sounder. It's looking actually not too bad. And based on the assumptions, our model suggests there will be money to enhance, to maintain the club, and to enhance the club, which I think is a good message for you to take away. Thank you, Mike.
So, the goal for the Board of Directors is to create value for the membership. We've already talked about the priorities, but the point of doing that is to create value. We had a long conversation in 2014 and 2015 about equity in the club. We voted at the end of that conversation to keep the club by a two-to-one margin to increase our dues so that we could create more value here at the club. If we create more value for the members, then we can get more members, and we get more revenues, and we can create more value for members in a virtuous cycle. And that is the objective of the Board of Directors going forward. You've already heard about what those priorities are. I'll just quickly rehash some of those. So, in the area of maintenance of our current assets, while you're gone for the maintenance closure, we're going to refinish the clubhouse tables, small expense item, but it will improve the appearance of those tables, which have become pretty worn over time. Second is to repaint the clubhouse exterior. Like I said, that'll be done as well over this break while you're gone. The third priority is to replace the clubhouse carpet. That's going to be a longer conversation. It absolutely needs to get done. It needs to get done in the context of the overall design of the clubhouse, exterior as well as interior, and that conversation is currently underway. We may replace some worn-out chairs. That cannot be discussed until we understand what the flooring is going to look like. On the outside, we did already replace one piece of equipment, a blower, and we may yet this year have to acquire some additional maintenance equipment. So, the whole goal, my whole goal, since I've been on the board, is to have continuous improvement. Every day, the members should come here. The club should be better than it was the day before. It should be better the day after today than it was today. So, on the outside, we have already refurbished the bunker left side of number seven. We've already replaced number 17 tee. We've spent a lot of money to tear down 50 dead trees. We've reactivated the sprinklers. We were made to cut our water usage by 40% a year ago, which required us to turn off all the sprinklers in the roughs and all the sprinklers in front of the tees. We now have more water, and so we were able to reactivate some of the sprinklers that were turned off previously, but to turn them into half heads instead of full heads. Now, they water back towards the fairway rather than the roughs that were being irrigated before. Just as a quick aside, I'm sure that the members here, here in this room, have a memory last year of how rugged the fairway has got at the margins in particular. They're not that way now. They're green to the margins, and they're green in the first band of rough, and that's our goal. That's our standard to go forward. While you're gone as well, we'll be adding some turf at the back of the number 11 tee. That tee's surface is too small and gets worn out too quickly. We already took out some bushes. We're going to move the bench, and there'll be turf there, which could be used in probably three weeks when the turf gets a chance to seed. Looking forward to the rest of this year, we're going to enhance two or three more bunkers. We're going to, the priority for those bunkers is based upon Mike Seuss's assessment of which bunkers have the worst drainage, because that is what makes bunkers unusable essentially. So, we have a list of those. It's more than three bunkers, but we'll work on the worst three in the rest of this year. And the last thing, my personal goal, is to see us scrub out the area to the right of number 17 and number 18, approximately between the women's tee on 17 to the woman, I'm sorry, I'll get in trouble. The white tee on 17 and the white tee on 18. That area has our views of the bay. The people that have come here, of course, architect candidates or as outside manager candidates, have all stressed how important that view is. That view needs to be preserved, and we can do it with our own forces now because it requires people and a chipper. We wait two or three years, it requires professionals to come in and cut down trees at great expense. So, my goal is to see us do that. That's a good project for the wintertime when it's too wet to do work on the golf course. So, on the side of the House Committee, you've already heard that we're going to be doing some of the things that I mentioned previously. They are also working hard to create a vision of this clubhouse entry and storefront experience. That is something we are definitely going to be able to present to you in October. I think you'll find that to be a very positive thing for the club. My view of that is that the course will sell itself to members as we make improvements to it. The long-term impression of Richmond will be the course. We can't let the short-term impression, when you first drive in and park your car and walk up to the club, we can't let the first impression turn people off before they get to the second impression, which is the most important thing for our future as a club. I don't want to leave the impression that the club is only a golf course and a clubhouse and physical facilities. The clubhouse is the experience of being part of a club. And in our case, it's being a golf club, because we're not a country club. We're all about golf. So, the golf committee has done a great job this year of working on one of the hardest problems in the game anywhere in the country, across the country, and that's pace of play. I think we've got to the point now where we know how to do that well, and we've already been successful with all of our events. We just need to make that happen as well for regular play so that people can become accustomed to coming here and playing quickly, not having to drag out. Handicaps is another issue that is a difficult issue for any club and is an issue for us across the country. Some of us don't ever play in a competitive event. Some of us don't ever bet. They never have a reason to use handicaps. But for the rest of the club, handicaps allow people to play together who have different abilities, different ages, different approaches to the game. As I mentioned to Brian, who's a tennis player, it is not much fun to play, if you're a good player in tennis, with a bad player in tennis. It's kind of miserable, actually. And it never works out, if you're a good skier, which I was, to drag a beginner up on the black diamonds. This is a recipe for divorces and worse. But golf is different. People who play golf play with all kinds of people, all kinds of ages, obviously both men and women, and handicaps let us do that. We are obligated by the USGA and the NCGA to maintain a rigorous handicaps program, and that will be getting rolled out to you all in August, and I'm sure it'll take us the rest of the year to get that totally finalized. So, the goal for today was to give you an understanding of the was to give you an understanding of the economic status of the club, the recent history of the club and the future history, and a forecast for the financial model that we're going to use as the core of the actual five-year plan, which will be much more detailed. But it will support and be based upon the financial model of the club. And the second thing is I wanted you to all understand how much progress we've made. Not just financial progress. Obviously, we were in really bad shape a couple of years ago. We are not now. We're making great progress going forward. But more than that, on the outside of the, you know, on the course, we're in a process where we will always be doing something to make the course better. The club facility, we're going to be in the process of making sure that we don't degrade our current asset. That's going to turn into, in the future, the improvements to the course, not just keeping it sustained the way it is. And the same thing will be true of our other physical facilities. So, having said that, I appreciate your all coming. We have time for as many questions as you want to ask us. We can go back to any slide that you'd like to look at. We'll go back here first to Tim.
A quick question. I think that you mentioned two to three bunkers per year that we're going to redo.
That's the end of this year, the second half of this year.
No, that's not that.
Okay.
So, let me just explain the logic of that, because I'm also the head of the Green Committee. So, several years ago, when Mac was the general manager, it was essentially impossible for the maintenance crew to do work on the course. Just wasn't considered to be a good idea. I have thought from the very beginning that it is something that we need to do. We need to always be making the course better. And we have some visible problems, bunkers being one of them. So, this year, we did... Last year, we did the two bunkers in the fairways on 15 and 18. This year, we did the right... The left-hand bunker on seven. We'll probably do two more. If we can, we'll do three more of those. Going forward, we can begin to sustain that effort where we don't change the greens, we don't change the rooting, but we make the bunkers better and keep them compatible with the existing bunkers that we have. So, that's our goal in the maintain and always be improving the club. That's a different goal than changing the club, just so you understand that.
And secondly, I would say, why did you have to the Green Superintendent to pick the holes or pick the bunkers to replace?
Oh, no, he didn't pick them. He just gave us...
I believe that you said it...
He gave us the list of the ones that don't drain properly. Because he does that better than we do. It's a longer list of bunkers than the ones that we have. We're just going to pick the things that we need to fix out of that list of poorly draining bunkers. We actually had a conversation on the Green Committee where we talked about the bunkers. And we tried to figure out whether people didn't like a bunker because it was in bad condition, didn't drain well, the sand was poor, where they didn't like a bunker because they couldn't play a shot out of it because they weren't very good bunker players. And one of the really good members of our club, really good players of our club, surprised me by saying, you know, "I don't find the bunkers to be a problem in a general way, but there are several. But they're just some really hard shots."
Right. But I was stressed to lead up to the membership to choose those bunkers and not the Green Superintendent to make some...
No, the Green Committee, actually, is the filter of that. And that members of... Different skill levels, different ages, and so forth. Let me go over here first.
Your financial projections that you're doing, that money's all based on new memberships? Is that just from dues?
No, no, it's based on two things, as Brian has said.
Sorry.
Well, I have more questions. So, what I wanted to know is that currently, I'm under the impression that we have about 280 equity members. Is that correct? 200 equity voting members. Is that an accurate number? 274. Okay, then we have another... What, we have 60 now? A category of 60 non-equity senior members?
Well, I can... We can go through the list.
Okay, that'd be great.
But let me just tell you. We have 424 paid-up members of the club. As at the end of June, we started the year with 422. And yes, the number of equity members is reducing. And we are bringing in new members, but they're in the non-equity area.
Are you concerned that that could weaken the club? Because I think that it's crucial to have equity members. I mean, you have a... Basically, if you have 275 members that are equity members, the membership to them is worth nothing. It's a liability to them, about a $3,500 liability. So, what's the incentive, then, for people to do that? And besides that, the history of Richmond Country Club and almost every country club in the Bay Area that's successful, they get their money and their liquidity from having a transfer fee and having people pay to get into a club. Have you guys addressed that? Or do you have any plans to address that?
Well...
Let me answer that. So, I talked a second ago about creating value for the membership. Just to answer your question specifically, the full equity equivalent, which takes half-time members, you know, all the dues go into one pot. You divide by the dues level. And that gives you the equivalent as though they were all full-time members. That number is currently 357 as of the end of June, full equity equivalent members.
But that's just a way of cooking the books to say...
No, 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 that's not cooking the books. That's an analysis.
Okay.
It's the analysis of how much money we get in.
I understand.
It's the only way that you can measure your flow. So, what's value? Olympic Club is a non-equity club. Is it a valuable place to be a golfer?
Very much so. It's got a waiting list.
Exactly. It's got a 10-year waiting list to get a golf privilege. And it costs $40,000 to get a golf privilege. Marin Country Club sold to... Or got managed by Trum. So, they have some equity members. Now, they're only selling non-equity members. They're not selling equity memberships anymore. Is it a valuable club to belong to?
Not for me, it's not.
But it is for the people that want to pay their money to join.
Right. But they... Non-equity and people paying money to get in, not just showing up here with a checkbook and their check clears and they're a member.
That is exactly right.
And that's what we have here.
And that's why we have to create value for the members. That's why we have to improve the club so that we get to have a waiting list and so that we get to begin to charge for the initiation fee. And so that your membership as an equity member, which came in from years ago, mine from 1983, that that equity membership becomes valuable to us because when we have a sale of a new member, we'll have the ability to get some money back, which we don't have today. So, that's what I'm talking about when I'm talking about creating value. That is the entire point of the exercise.
Dave, we did have a membership sale earlier this year. And we sold 20 memberships. Was it 20 or 30? 20, 3,000 equity members. And now, we've raised it to 4,000. And I think we sold one. So, we are having non-equity members who become equity members. It's not like we're not selling any equity members. We're selling...
Right.
I don't know exact numbers, but we are selling quite a number of equity memberships right now. And the price is 4,000.
That's been the model. And that's when Richmond Country Club was in its heyday. That's the model they used. And that was very successful. I don't know why we wouldn't at least try to go back to that as a main thing. That's one. Another question about the memberships is, what are we doing to vet members? What process are we doing? When I joined here, I had to get four letters from members. I had to go in front of the board. I mean, there was a number of things you had to do. What are we doing currently? Is there any vetting process? Or you just give a check and you're in?
I think Rose does the initial interviews. And then, our manager also interviews. And the director of... The committee director for membership also should reach out to them. When I was on the membership committee, I always wrote them a letter inviting them to come play golf and enjoy the facilities with me.
Okay. This seems that we're losing our way a little bit. Those things all worked really well in the past. And why are we not sticking to that?
We're not sticking to that because it failed to work three years ago. The club was going downhill in a quick way two years ago. There was doom and gloom. Golf is a dying game. No one wants to play. The young people don't want to play. They want to spend time with whatever else they want to do. So, when we had the discussion about whether we were going to sell the property of the club, when that survey was going to go out, I made the recommendation as a board member to say, "We got to stop selling equity memberships because we can't afford the speculation. We can't let people join this club in order to vote to sell the property. We can't let somebody spend $4,000 to be a club member, vote to sell it, and try to cash it out for whatever it would have been."
But we're doing that now. We're selling memberships for 3,000.
So... But the intention at this point in time, as for your vote, which we appreciate very much, is not to talk about a real estate play. This is about a club. This is about Richmond Country Club. And we're going to make it increasingly valuable. What we're doing today isn't going to be what we do two years from now because we're going to have a better golf course and more demand. And as we get more demand, the rules are going to be changed.
Okay. So, then, if you're relying just on members that come in and don't pay the initiation fee, you're going to have to expand the categories and have more members than we've had in the past. Is that true?
We've had a membership cap of 500 since I've been here in 1983. It has not changed. And it's not going to change. So, the goal, like I said, you have to create value for the club. We have to get members lined up at the door to join the club and to pay initiation fees. And once that happens, then you can change how you structure your business. But we had to have the revenue from the non-equity members. And we proved, absolutely proved, that golf is not a dying game and that Richmond Country Club is a great place to play golf. Now, we have to make it a greater place to play golf. And we have to change the rules. Just as we changed the rules two years ago, we'll change the rules going forward based upon the actual results of what we do and upon the value of our golf course and our facility.
Dave, just to move... Move a step forward with that. A couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, we were obviously in a bad spot, both financially, vision-wise, club-wise, direction. We all know what we went through for the last two years. In order to stopgap that, and really, that's what it is, is a Band-Aid, you had to think outside the box in terms of your membership options. And that was non-equity memberships. That is a membership category many clubs are turning to and many clubs are starting to implement. A lot of those clubs are struggling. You're not talking about your meadows, your arindas, your castle, you know, your clairemonts and things like that. They're probably going to be healthy for many, many decades. But we had to do something very quickly to get ourselves turned in the right direction. From this point on, that's worked for us. We're in a better position at this point financially. And what this year represents, at least the beginning of this year, moving forward from the vote that you all took last October, was we have to now have a plan in place and a vision in place to get to where Dave's talking about, to get back to putting value on this club where people will want to be equity members here. But you had to do something to get to where we want to be. And I say "we" because that's where I want to be with what Dave's talking about. I want to get back to that, where you're not just relying on monthly dues and equity dues. You want to get back to having a full equity membership where everybody's got to got their buy-in. But there are steps that have to be taken to get there. I'm hoping, within the next three to four months, that we move forward with the plans that the board have been working on for the last six months, present a better plan for you and one that really, really looks at what's going to carry us in the future of golf course. That's really what we have to take care of. That's really what we have to improve upon, that might get people to want to stay here long-term and invest longer. But where we're at now, again, and I'm not afraid to say, that's kind of a stopgap. It's a position to help create us, to get us in a better financial position in order to hopefully get to where I think Dave wants to be and where probably most of you want to be. But we had to do it. And I hate to say it, we had to do it. We're better off now than we were certainly two years ago and a year ago by far. And we'll probably have to continue to do this for at least the remainder of this year and probably into early 2017. But we're hoping we have a plan in place that we can present to the membership here shortly that will have your buy-in. You'll like what we're doing. You'll like the direction that the board's going to take it. And ultimately, your club's going to go in. That then will create that value that hopefully Dave's talking about. And then, our equity membership starts to outweigh the non-equity.
Okay, Rose, Mary, and then John.
The other part of that that would help was extra privileges or benefits for the people who are equity members versus non-equity members.
Well, we have discussed at the board level for the last two years how we should differentiate the categories of membership. We worked hard to make the non-equity members feel welcomed as part of the club. We also thought about the senior non-equity memberships. And we didn't want to cut the senior non-equity members out of a club that they've supported for years. So, we've made both of those generous. And they're going to go on being generous in the short term. If you can think of some ideas that you'd like to see us implement, we're always happy to consider how to do that. But what I don't ever want to get back to is some conversation about how equity is the same as the value of our property. That is not the point. That is exactly the opposite of what the point is. The point is a valuable club. The point is having people lined up to pay more to join this club. People don't regard their membership at the Meadow Club, at Marin Country Club, at Olympic Club, or the other mini-clubs in this area, which are either all or partly non-equity. They don't regard their membership as being valueless. And they don't think they can come and go. They know they can't come and go. They got to be here to stay. And they pay a lot of money for the privilege. And that's what we have to get. John?
We've had some...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dave wanted to... Okay.
We've had some membership volunteer things over the past that have helped improve the value of the club, like divot parties and things like that. I think there's a lot of pent-up demand, if you will, for people to help out. You know, like you're going to paint the shack or something. People show up with paintbrushes and help paint the shack.
We were thinking about the tree removal. We thought maybe 25 chainsaws would be good.
Well, no, seriously. Seriously, I suggested that years ago, to cut those little suckers down before they get big. It doesn't have to be a chainsaw. It can be a little handsaw.
I totally agree. And the membership, like I tried to say in my last slide, this is a club. It's not just a golf course. It's not just a clubhouse. It's people who enjoy being here for a lot of reasons.
Which committee would be in charge of figuring out how volunteers could help do something around here?
That's a committee that has previously been housed. That's a committee that has previously been housed, but I think we're going to need to re-energize the social committee, which has not been a committee for a while. And, but having said that, once again, I'm absolutely happy to get any suggestions from anybody.
Thanks for volunteering, John.
No, totally seriously, I, we put on, we put on the, the Northern California Women's Golf Association Annual Stroke Play Championship about three weeks. 54 holes, 18 here, 18 at Marin, 18 at Meadow. I spent the day before that event and walked the fairways, filled the divots, went to every green to make sure that the pitch marks were fixed and so on. I completely believe that's how we have to treat our golf course. We have to make this a great place to play golf and a place that we all care about. I'm sorry.
In answer to Dave's question, you know, we do have a limit of 150 non-equity memberships and I believe we have a, now the board has resolved to be a limit of 60 on senior non-equity and a limit of 60 on a junior non-equity. So, and on a regular, full dues-paying non-equity members, I forget exactly what it is now, but I think it's around 22. So hopefully in, and that is adjusted as we get more equity members. In other words, if we get equity members and there's 150 non-equity or now we got, say, 351 equity, then the last non-equity member's either going to have to convert or, or leave. So the hope and as a practical matter, you know, we've tried all kinds of different, over the past years that I've been on the board anyway, they tried all kinds of different initiation fees and if you can get them, you can get them. If you can't, you can't. And, and I propose various things that Rose can discuss them with you. We had the business membership, which is actually what, what the non-equity membership turned out to be. And so if we reach the point where we have 150 non-equity members, it's going to be a lot easier, you know, when it's like there's no motel you want to get into more than the one with the no vacancy sign. So right now, you know, people can join just paying dues. The board can consider whether we want to, you know, have an initiation fee for non-equity members, but getting enough dues payers has been the major objective. And once it gets up to 150 non-equity, it's going to be, you know, we may reach the point, as Mike says, in creating value and people will want to get in as equity members.
So there's a cap of 500 total, each category, okay, that's understandable. Have you thought about tweaking it now where you're getting more demand, you're getting people coming and you seem to be pretty successful sellers? Or we, maybe we should start tweaking it a little bit, saying, hey, let's, let's push the envelope a little bit here.
Well, I think that's why the board put a limit on the number of junior non-equity and the number of senior non-equity. Nobody's thought, to my knowledge, nobody's thought yet about tweaking to 500 or tweaking 150, which was a, which were tweaks that we made at, at the time we imposed the 150 limit on non-equity members.
You want to create a demand for, you want to create a waitlist, that's what every club wants in their, in their club. We're 20 non-equity members away from that. We've only got 20 spots left. So once, obviously, we fill that up, then it creates that kind of market demand like, well, you can't get in here right now. So hopefully that'll help, that'll help start selling some equity memberships and people will buy in.
And just to be specific, if we reserve, we right now have 52 junior execs, 46 senior non-equity, with a max of 60 in each category. So that would mean we want to kind of reserve 120 spots of the 150 for those two categories. We have 25 full dues non-equity. There's only five spots left in full dues non-equity, but 20 overall for the seniors in the...
We're coming up on some limits that'll start hopefully pushing that, that waitlist.
Got it?
You may have answered my question, but as of today, exactly how many different types of memberships are we looking at?
Well, we have fewer types than we used to have because the membership committee decided to go through the policies and got rid of several categories that were vacant, essentially. So Ralph, if you want to answer that question, I mean, I can give you the broad strokes.
Right now, really, all we're selling is, is equity and non-equity memberships. It's, there's, and in your non-equity, you have a full dues-paying membership, which is, which is what an equity member pays and then you have a junior membership and that varies depending on your age. Most clubs have that in whether, you know, you're a non-equity club or an equity club. Most have junior memberships. But we also have a senior non-equity membership that many have come into and then we have social, so those are the key ones. I mean, we've really kind of limited it down. We don't have, we don't offer the business anymore. There's a few others that would, had gone away that we've gotten rid of that we never used in the last few, five, five, six, seven years. So really, we're offering equity and non-equity memberships right now and we're about to sell out of our non-equity memberships, which will help build some demand.
Amanda?
I have a question. First of all, I think that the, those responsible have done a great job of increasing the membership through the use of non-equity memberships, but I have a, maybe an emotional reaction to the disparity between the monthly dues between non-equity and what I pay as, as a full equity member. And I'm just, it seems to me to be a very deep discount and perhaps a source of revenue.
So let me ask, answer that question. The difference between your dues and a full dues-paying non-equity member is zero. They pay exactly what you do. But we do have a junior executive program and every club that I'm aware of has one of those. The, the goal has always been to bring in younger members into the club and then gradually increase their monthly dues and at the end of the day, they become full dues-paying members, usually at age 40. I think that's kind of standard across the industry and that is really, you know, that's, you can adjust how many of those you want to sell, but conceptually, you're always going to have a program like that if you're going to be in the mainstream with all the other clubs around here. Now, the thesis of that, of course, is that young people don't make as much money as older people who are more established in their careers. I'm not personally sure that's true anymore. So, so anyway, I just can't stress enough that this is about creating value and that all the programs we have are subject to being upgraded, modified, changed, made better. There's a ton of things we can do. We could change the, the non-equity members to require annual contracts, which could be done if you wanted to do it, if you're worried about stability. You could do a lot of different things, but you do it when you have demand. You know, you got to drive the demand curve first, then you get a lot of flexibility. And as Brian said, our goal is to make improvements to this club based upon the capital dues that we collect from members. We do not want to have a divisive conversation about assessments when some members are not going to pay assessments and other members aren't. That is a concern that we definitely have and we definitely want to avoid.
And just to follow up real quick, John, before we get to that. And one of the things that, that most clubs do and the reason why they have junior equities is not only kind of a lifeline of the club membership going down the road, there is some inequity in that because like Mike said, a lot of the junior members probably make more than a lot of us here. But it, but it's also, they're still at that point in their careers where they can be changing jobs immediately, they have families that, that can be, they can be moving, pulling time where obviously a lot of the established members who have been in clubs a long time may have already gone through that process. So it's, it's really a thing where clubs, industry-wide, have really glommed onto that and said, whatever we got to do to get younger people in here and give them a chance to understand why they want to be a part of a private club as opposed to public courses, we're going to do that. Luckily for us, while our junior members and any junior member at any club pays less than an equity member, our non-equity, like Mike said, our non-equity members do pay, do pay full dues just as an equity member does. Whereas if you go up to Maravista, they're paying 125 less and not paying any capital contribution. Our, our, our non-equity members do. So, and, and there's a reason because we've got more practice facilities, it's a better spot. But it's, it's, we're in a pretty good position with our non-equity membership base in terms of, of what they pay for us because there are a lot of clubs that don't get what, what we get for that. But it's a good thing to have the junior membership category in here for, for many, many reasons. But we do understand that there is that perception and, and reality that they pay less and why. But industry-wide, it's, it's looked upon as a great thing for most clubs.
So I joined in '83 as a trial member. I was 33 years old or I was going to become 33 at the end of the year. I paid $500 for the year, for everything. And that was because the club at that point was a bunch of people that lived right around here. A lot of Chevron people, as well as a lot of people that just lived in the area. They lived in Pinole, they lived in El Sabrani, they lived in El Cerrito. 500 bucks, I played for the year. End of the year, the, the initiation fee has gone up from 300, I'm sorry, from, from 3,000 to 3,500. So they credit me the $500 because it was so unfair that the dues, that the initiation fee went up by $500. So I played for free for the first year. You know, the things that we're doing now are not unusual to this club. They've been done forever at this club. And you have to get members in the door, you got to make them fall in love with the place as we have. We've been here for that whole time and had a great time playing golf. Yep. John, it's all you.
Okay. I noticed that 2017, we're going to have a big bump in maintenance, golf course equipment purchases or something like that. It's like 200 grand. Are we really, really, really thinking that Mike absolutely needs this stuff to be all spent in 2017?
We really, really, really have had that conversation.
Or can we lease it?
We've really, really had the conversation several different times in, in the past in the club. I worked two years ago, I think you probably all saw, especially that I created, we had a general meeting a while back and I, I took all the equipment purchases and leases, you know, that went back to before Mike was even here and I put them on a kind of a rational basis where I scheduled them out on a rolling forward basis as to how fast they had to be replaced. In fact, we didn't replace equipment two years ago. We've only replaced one piece of equipment this year, we may do a few more at the end of this year. So we've built up some demand. Leasing can be done and some people do it. Our golf carts are leased, for example, sometimes equipment's leased. Mike is very shrewd at figuring out what the economics are of that, what's the benefit to us. If you lease it, you may pay less, but you may not be able to keep it going on the way Mike has of his current equipment. The other question we're going to have to ask ourselves is, it's scheduled to be required next year. I have to admit that Mike has made some hard choices every single year, going back to when he first got here. Some years he spends zero, some years he spends a quarter million dollars. It's just depends upon what we have to spend and what really, really needs to get replaced. Nothing's going to get replaced before it has to be, that's for sure. Yep. Well, I want to, I want to thank you guys for coming in. We're going to have another meeting in October. We will have put the, the meat on the bones of this financial model and we'll be talking quite specifically about a variety of, of the improvements to the club that we're going to be able to do going forward. And I think that you'll find that that is the next step to creating the confidence that we have to have in ourselves and the confidence that new prospective members have to have, that we're going to make this club increasingly valuable going forward. We're never going to change the zip code, we're never going to be a country club, much as Brian wants to do it, there'll be no tennis courts here, but we're going to be a really, really good golf club and we're going to have people lined up to join this club. Thanks.
Real quick, real quickly, a year and a half, year ago at this time, we were in trouble, you know, just not only club-wise, financially-wise, but, but membership-wise. We had infighting, we had, we had petitions, we had all kinds of things going on a year ago at this time. And to come back from where we were, it's not easy to do that. You know, a club has to believe in something and has to understand and believe that we can get it done, we can move forward, we're going in the right direction. And it's really a testament to the membership at this point that you stuck with your guns, you voted the right way, that's obviously the way we wanted to go in terms of keeping this a golf club. And now, while, while you may not see it on a daily basis, obviously I work with the board on a daily basis, this truly is a group that is trying to put together the future for your club. So while you may not hear about it or see it or, or even believe it for the most part, I honestly believe that. They're trying to look at the long-term viability of what we need to do to become a great golf club. And hopefully in the next few months, that will become a little more clear for all of us. But you can't go honestly from where we were because it was bad. Take it from me, I've been through a couple of these now with different clubs. It's not easy to turn it over, particularly in a short, in a six-month period. We've gone from, you know, being 160,000 in liquidity, negative liquidity, to 74,000. That's an 86,000 or 80-something thousand dollar improvement in six months. We've got 108,000 in the bank for, for capital dues. We had nothing in there last year. You know, we, we have zero on our credit card at this point. Doesn't mean we're not going to potentially use it because we've got a lot of stuff coming up, but we've got nothing on our line of credit. It's definitely trending in the right place and we've got to keep moving in that direction and, and it's incumbent upon the board and myself and you to get us in a position and give us a plan that you guys can, can buy into and start understanding and start believing in, that then will cross over the barrier to getting equity members, creating some value, creating demand for this club. But if we don't do that, then we're going to fall right back into potentially where we were. And I believe they're on the right track, I really do. So a couple other quick things. Amanda wanted me to mention that if you were at the wine tasting, your wine is here so you can pick that up if you ordered wine. And then for those of you who are still, still here, the first round's on us. So, thank you, everybody.